There's a piece of, uh, at school. I say old, but it's between here, Hicks and Mary Potter. There is some, there is, we really come out this driveway across the street. There's some land, a landlocked piece of land that, um.
Okay, thank you.
This unusable because it's something.
Yeah.
And then there is the school system, which is obviously Mary Potter. There's an old railroad bed and it connects all the, what will be the future. And it's like a perfect park. It's beautiful back there.
Yeah.
I walked back there and it is gorgeous. That piece of land, there's a piece of land that we could acquire or get an easement on, but if we can acquire it, it's just like a few thousand dollars. Very small, it's landlocked. Can't build anything on it.
You sound like the old Mary Potter's train on either one of the table streets.
Well, no, I'm saying, uh, yes.
No, this.
Um, kinda runs the, the, so you know, you know Railroad Street.
Yes.
This property runs to the right of that, down the valley behind those homes. I've got, um, I've got some rendering and stuff. It's easier to show it. It's really, really pretty. We talk to some trail associations and stuff if we wanna just like make trails or whatever.
I thought you were talking to me. We, we wanted to, we wanted to.
So it's kinda neat stuff. Matt brought to me last month, I suggested it. I'm happy about it because you've had that exposure in the green light stuff.
Are you ready to go, guys?
Yeah, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of connectivity with this project. So, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a bit.
I love, why don't my colleagues, um, visit, but, yo, yo. Madam Commissioner.
We are ready.
Ready to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Were you looking at it?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call tonight's meeting to order. We are assembled here today for the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners Agenda Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July sixth, twenty twenty-two, and it is five thirty-one P M. And we are assembled in the Commissioners Boardroom here at City Hall. And if you have any electronic devices, please mute them or turn them off at this time. And the first item of business is to set the agenda for the Tuesday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-two regular session. And I hope everybody had a wonderful Independence Day and holiday weekend. So with that, we have the regular opening items. Any questions on any of that? Okay, then we move forward to delegations. Morgan Ren, Employee of the Month. Bravo. Tina Chee. Will you be, would you like us to present that to you during the board meeting?
Sure.
Okay, that's great. That's good to know. Yard of the Month will be announced. Finance discussion by our Finance Director, Hock Eng. The Sari Report and Work Plan Final Draft will be presented by Bruce Naglin from the Department of Commerce. And wow, recognizing Jimmy Terry, whose retirement. Havens to Betsy, how many years has he worked for the City of Oxford?
I have to go back and, well, we're trying to put together some notes.
That would be good. Or you could do the notes. However you wanna do it, we could divide and, and do it. So, well, congratulations to Jimmy. Jimmy, that's a big deal. Bravo. And then we have Item Four, Public Hearings, of which we have a number. So the first one is to conduct a public hearing to be held to receive citizen input regarding a request from Dennis Cyrus of Youngsville, North Carolina, requesting a conditional zoning from residential agricultural to general, general residential, five dwellings per acre for the property located off of Highway ninety-six and backing up to the outer loop, which is across from Jordan Creek Estates. Do any of you all have any questions on this item at this time? Okay, I have one, which I'm sure you all know. Ms. Hart, will you be able to do one of your wonderful presentations to indicate what the changes means and, and all of that? Great.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize. And I apologize to the board for not asking this question sooner, which I probably should have. I, I wanna ask a question of the attorney. If, um, if what I'm seeing is correct, if he is requesting a rezoning from residential agricultural to G R five, is that G R five C U? Is that what he is requesting? Because my question is that if the applicant is proposing a condition to be placed on that, is that not contract zoning? And should we just not go the route of a conditional use?
Because they're doing, they're proposing that.
It works either way, in my opinion, as far as a condition being placed upon a rezoning.
They were not understanding that our company can voluntarily place those conditions, but we can place those conditions. So if the applicant chooses to do so, it's legal, but we can enforce it.
And how do we enforce that? Should they choose to do otherwise?
So, but if they are request, if they are requesting, it is kinda interesting, like, don't we have a G R three? Is that what you're getting at?
It's either that or is, is, are, are there not G R C U categories within?
Oh, conditional use.
Yeah, where we just, where he just applies for a conditional use and then you can make that a condition as part of the conditional use rezoning. Because it becomes specific to that property.
I would discuss it with the, um, they, you know, they only want to have the density that they, um, submitted. So if that's just a condition, I'll make sure they, that's what they're gonna ask.
You're right. That would be my question as well. How do we enforce it if, if the applicant is placing the conditions on and not the city? So it's a very good.
And it gets more so in one of the other ones. And yes, and I have a comment too, but yes, please, Commissioner Con.
So these are single, so they're proposing single family on that, correct?
That's correct.
Would we not rather see this like a, a, a G R ten as opposed to a G R five? And do a conservation development? That's been our direction thus far.
Well, I think that's when we get into contract zoning, when you start developing it and telling the applicant how to develop it relative to that configuration proposed to us. So if, if that's what he's asking, why don't we think we can force him to do that?
But could, could, and, and this fault, because somebody else said, all the conditional use things that are in your agenda are all related to density. Don't you wanna ask for some other things? And I wasn't aware that we could ask for other things if it was to avoid contract zoning. So I think I have a gap in understanding. But the manager's question, so we do need to hear from your attorney, is, do we not have a G R three?
We do have a G R three.
So couldn't we go back to them and say, well, granted, G R three, no conditional use required? I mean, if the board would approve it, let me be.
Yeah, use it without.
You can always suggest.
Why ask for five?
You can always suggest to the applicant. You know, it's not looked upon as you're making that request that they do so as a condition for its approval through the process. You have to be careful.
So Ms. Hart, I think I need to rehear that. Ms. Hart said he's asking, they're asking for the five, but we're proposing only two point six. So meaning they wanna do more cluster development and like.
Because the, the five, of course.
That's, yeah, that'd be cluster.
And then it's a lot.
Okay, so they are gonna leave some of that area unimproved.
On the attachment, first attachment.
Okay, that, well, so, Mr. Thornton, I was kinda listening when Ms. Hart said smaller lot sizes and I didn't get every word of, of what you just said, but what, what?
I don't remember any word I said.
Okay. What, what do you propose? What does our esteemed attorney have to say with respect to this?
Well, I mean, I think if they're, they're putting the condition on the use themselves, I don't know how we can enforce that.
But if we approve it, doesn't it then make, doesn't it then make it enforceable on our side? Because they have requested a conditional use, they have proposed that this is what the, and once we say, yes, okay, then, then it was approved with that limitation and so it would be enforceable?
I mean, they even proposed them to a total normal lot. So anything above what they proposed and what we agreed, then, I mean, wouldn't the store put the conditions that they have in place?
Do we know that we don't?
I don't think you can. In my opinion, I don't think you can. If they are voluntarily just coming up with a condition and you agree it and then you enforce it as a condition, then you have entered into contract zoning as a, for that condition.
Isn't that what we did with the seventy-six acre?
No, we actually suggested that they seek the conservation rezoning, which basically covered all of that. We did not put that in. It was not an actual condition. Contract zoning means that in order for someone to get approval, they meet whatever standard that you choose to impose, be it additional.
Right.
Dog lots or whatever.
Right.
That's contract zoning. You cannot do that.
So you totally get that, but didn't Chad Sari say when he came to speak to the board? And I, I can't remember if it was in this room or when we were at our retreat, but I distinctly remember him saying, oh, we don't, we almost don't do anything but conditional use zoning in big forest, so.
Yeah, and I've heard, you know, arguments for both sides of that.
I'm not saying we oughta, I mean, I'm hoping we can get to a point where we're not doing that. But do we need, you know, I still see Thomas reading.
But I think, to me, the simplest solution is if we can provide him with a category of zoning that meets his desire.
Right.
Then that would be the preferred course.
That'd be a G R.
Without going to any conditions or conditional use zoning or, you, you stay away from that spectrum.
If at all possible.
If at all possible.
So Ms. Hart, would that be G R three with conservation development, which would allow that clustering?
I'll just have to give him these comments and let him figure it out. I mean, is that appropriate? I shouldn't be figuring out how they should develop it.
Yes, ma'am.
Why, why is it he wants to do it as a condition rather than just a permitted zoning?
Because he can't small lot sizes out of that particular zoning class.
And we, and we don't have a zoning classification that will meet that need?
He probably could go conservation. As they do it with, if they have small lot sizes there.
So he's trying to add the condition so he can get a smaller lot size.
With the higher density, but.
And put a cap on the number of, of lots.
I'm not sure that I agree with him being able to do that. And I don't know why he can't select one of the zoning classifications and work to meet that rather than impose his own restriction for his benefit. That's what, that's what it amounts to.
Yeah, it does. I mean, that's the concern that I have. Mayor, I think at this point in time, Cheryl and I will talk again first thing tomorrow morning and see if we can come up something that would best serve all parties and, and still move this forward.
Right, and that, of course, applies to, so Item B, um, is the request, the request that goes along with that. Item C is the same developer. And the same approach. So, um, and, and Ms. Hart, is, is this related, going up to the twelve dwelling units? Is that related to the fact that we still don't allow townhomes in? So, so we need to really work on that one. Because if, it, it would seem to me if, if we allowed townhomes in conservation development, I mean, I can't say from the land use side, but it would seem like then he could ask for a G R five conservation, which would allow him up to seven, which would allow that, right?
Again, I'll have to, you know, get some truth on that.
Sure. So anyway, Mr. Thornton and Mr. Burnett, do you wanna take both of these items and have a conversation with Ms. Hart and?
I think we're gonna have to. I really do. I don't want the city to enter into anything that could be viewed as, number one, setting precedent or entering into any type of contract to establish development.
Okay.
Requirements, restrictions. And again, I apologize to Cheryl as well. I, I, I should've looked at it closer. I did not. I guess, I guess I envisioned seeing a C U behind that G R five.
And I don't think I've ever seen that.
Yeah.
So.
Again, I apologize for that.
If you see the C U, so this is, I think, new for all the members of the board. So if you do the conditional use, then you have to have that listed in.
That's correct. If you have it as a, if you have a category of uses in your table, permitted uses, that's C U, whatever the other connotation is along with it, you have the inability to have those types of discussions.
Okay.
With the developer to create the development in such a fashion that it will fit in.
And maybe that's what the question that I got with respect to, there are a lot of conditional use requests that only are limited to density and why isn't there any opportunity to do anything more? So maybe that's what it's related to. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I, again, I'm sorry. I should've called it a little sooner.
Better now than Tuesday night?
That's right.
So, thank you very much. And Ms. Hart, we appreciate your diligence in work because we know this adds to your plate, so thank you. Uh, so we go down to a public hearing to hear citizen input on the rezoning request from Certain T, that's Item E, located at two hundred Certain T Drive, I think you mean to, Certain T Drive. So they wanna rezone forty-two plus or minus acres located off of Providence Road from residential agriculture to light industrial to expand the facility campus. Zoning change involves sixty-two plus or minus acres in which forty-two is within the City of Oxford's jurisdiction. In the E T J, correct? Uh, and twenty plus or minus acres within Graham County's jurisdiction. So they're going through what they need to do for both jurisdictions to comply. Are there any questions on this item?
I just have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so there's no undoing the zoning or the benefits that the companies currently have that do not pay taxes to the city? So everything that they annex or everything that they, every time they expand, it continues to be? There's, there's no opportunity for Oxford to benefit from this?
Not really, other than to have our citizens employed there and, you know, the folks that are employed there, the wages that they earn spent in Oxford. But other than that, as far as it becoming ad valorem tax base, unless they voluntarily agree to annex or, you know, submit an annexation for voluntary annexation, but, no.
So never, ever, unless they choose to do.
Unless they choose to, the way the laws are written in North Carolina right now.
But if this board chose at some point to adjust our outside water rates, am I correct? Commissioner Bullock, that we chose to do that, to make them, um, higher for outside entities, then?
Then they need to do a cost to see that I got you. I mean.
If there is value in being.
So you price the algebra to kind of do it. Whatever, but yeah. Okay, yeah, this is interesting.
And, yeah.
And we could take that two hundred and eleven million dollars in tax base expansion, we know it's.
What would we do with it?
Did you just say, what were we thinking?
Yeah, what would we do with it?
I think that was.
I don't know, we could be probably pretty immediate, I'm sure. But you gotta have it first.
We'd give everybody raises and we'd get more employees.
There you go. Ms. Hart, will you be able to do a little presentation for us on this one too? This one, please. Thank you. Okay, so then let me just make sure, I'm, I'm. E is Certain T, F is Certain T, then we got another one, public hearing. Okay, this is Cruz Farm, conditional, so again, we have conditional, rezoning fifty-two acres from R A to G R ten. Proposes to develop the property for two hundred thirty-three townhomes. With the limit, to develop the property at a density of four point four seven units per acre. So, Mr. Thornton, does this fit in along with the other questions?
Sure seems like it. Seems like it's very similar to the A item.
So the issue with them, of course, is that they can't, if they wanna do townhomes, this is really something that we need to fix pretty quickly.
Yes, we do.
In the U D O, is to allow townhomes, um, which I thought they were. It's just, it's just, I mean, do we wanna, I guess, we, do we want to get that on the agenda? Because it seems to me that we don't have to add something in G R ten, but eliminate the wording elsewhere where it says only, townhomes are only allowed in G R ten. If you take that, I mean, I don't know, how complicated is this? This, is it pretty complicated?
Pretty complicated, and as complicated as you want to make it to be. However, I, I will say this, in, in looking over these items, I know that there's a number of language decision items on the agenda. I will say that, um, as a board, you should not feel pressured in any way to make a decision because there is an item on your agenda. You have, always have the opportunity to, you know, table these items until such time as you believe you are prepared and ready to make a decision. You always have that option available to you when an item comes along that, you know, you have questions about, it's extremely complicated or you don't know how it fits with your recent U D O adoption and/or your comprehensive land use study planning process. So anytime you don't feel completely comfortable as to how this fits in or how it's gonna look, or you have questions that remain, you always have that as an option. So never feel pressured to, to make that decision simply because the item is there.
So I.
Yes, I, I've got Commissioner Bridges and then Commissioner Con.
You know, I mean, as I'm listening to the discussion, I, do we need to balance these concerns with discouraging development? You know, I mean, it seems like there were earlier meetings where we talked about, you know, the importance of not discouraging folks who are trying to develop land and increasing our tax base and things like that. So, you know, I mean, is it always a balancing act? Because, I mean, I.
I think specifically for Oxford, it is, that it is a delicate balancing act. However, I think these developers would understand what we're doing as far as the process and, and better understanding how all of this is going to recreate Oxford to a certain extent. And that it is new to Oxford, especially when you're having really something that you haven't experienced before, which is hundreds and hundreds of townhomes being proposed. And, you know, you, you just. I always try to take the long-term look at it and instead of the short-term potential benefit of new residents and new townhomes and all of those kinds of things, you need to consider how is it going to impact? And in light of all of these coming as conditional request or the developer voluntarily, you know, saying, I'll condition, you know, this request, you need to look at how, what you have as mechanisms already in place or what mechanisms you need to put in place additionally that really regulate, for lack of a better word, how these developments are going to take place in light of what your plan is for them. So it is a bit of a delicate balancing act. However, I think that, um, honestly, you know, I don't know how many of these are, specifically the ones coming from Youngsville, are determined to start construction the day after you approve them. I honestly think that, that those may be preparing for the future, to have the zoning category there and in place when they're ready.
When they're ready, exactly. Which makes it all the more important that, one, we make sure that we're not doing contract zoning.
Well, it also makes it important for you to realize that, um, landowners and developers are doing their plan when looking at Oxford. We need to be doing ours.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you so much.
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna just interrupt you when you started talking.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanted a little bit of clarification on G, uh, because the notes that I have when we discussed this last month, that we were, we were satisfied because they're essentially voluntarily, um, entering into the, um, conservation requirements of a G R ten, even though they're not required for the townhomes. So I see the, I see what we're talking about, what, I understand there is a correlation between what we talked around Item A and G, but in terms of, uh, in terms of potentially slowing something down or putting a bump in the road, I felt like we were, as a board, satisfied with where they were headed because it, uh, aligned with our vision, if you will, for what a development should be. Is that, is that still a correct understanding? Based on what we discussed last week or month?
I think that's a question to the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not me.
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't here last month, but, um, from my perspective, I think the city should always be in control of what's being developed and a C U is much better than, from our perspective, than this, you know, from developers dictating what they want and agreeing to, and as Alan said before, have you enforce it if it's their idea. I'd like the city to be in control more than developers. And with a C U, I think we are more in control.
So it would be either the, yes, Commissioner Gordon?
Go ahead and finish your.
I was just gonna say, so either the option of having C U in the approval, in which case we look at, is there any, or is there anything else that being careful about contract? in which case we look at, is there any, or is there anything else that being careful about contract zoning? Or what I'm getting the impression from the manager is preferable is seeing if there's something that we have currently that could be suggested, am I understanding that correctly?
I think we need to investigate both options.
Right. So.
So I guess the, the question was, when we investigate those options, it would be a blanket for the Cruz Pond as well as, as well as this other, um, group out of Youngsville for the Highway ninety-six, um, property, is what, is what we're saying.
Yes, the A and the.
The A and the G, yeah.
A and the G, yeah.
It would be item A, item C.
And G.
Item G. But there's also, there's, oh, D is the approval, okay, and then we got certain T, right, got it, A, C, G.
Basically, anything that involves where developers self-condition.
Yeah. All right, yeah.
No, they just want a straight approval. Oh, wait, no, there it is, conditional, so what about I?
I.
And this Owen pointed out, that's a conditional rezoning of the properties located from neighborhood business to highway business, but they don't have any, they're not imposing any limits.
The situation with, is that the store, you have the shopping complex, has the owner, he purchased the whole thing. Half of it is on, how it is, which is a current, uh, where the mausoleum and all those businesses. Then on the other side, he owns the A store and part of that is owned by the businesses as well as an outpost, which, uh, Golden's still a purchase, and that's all they exist, and so you have a piece of property with one owner, one part of it is owned by the businesses, one part of it is owned by the business, he wants it all, probably business.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
And in addition to that, he owns the public park, he's done, he wants that too, that's how it is. So the shop is done, part of it is, how it is, part of it is made for business.
So it's just up, I mean, it's a.
And I'll provide you with that.
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Thornton, that, uh, does or does not fit? That's for I only find it. Um. Even though it says conditional, is it, uh?
And definitely it was discovered, a part of it is owned by the businesses, which, okay, he wouldn't allow it to be covered. But part of it is owned by the businesses, it's a purchase, it's a convert. So you're talking about, considering.
So it's just a question, though, with our development at this point, starting with, you know, land use plan, on whether or not we're interested in having all of that be highway business or not. We may not be.
But, but don't we already have some neighborhood, the, the development that is going in there, zone residential? I mean, so how are we driving?
Actually, none of that, I mean, we, the, all the residential we found is new, this, um, same building complex is coming up. And that's how it is.
I thought we were talking about near the Walmart area.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about.
Okay.
We're up on the hill, further up.
Where George's is located.
Where George's?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, they're down there, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, well, my question was.
Yes, ma'am.
A question that was asked last week, uh, well, the last time we met, and I don't remember which meeting it was, but the question came up whether or not by having a lot of towns, townhomes, will we be able to say that a certain period of time they need to maintain ownership or something like that? And we were gonna find the answer to that so that we don't have a lot of rentals going on? Was one of the questions from, from this board?
Yeah, you did ask that, yeah.
Well, I think Brian asked it, but I, I was interested in the answer.
I don't know that there's been one yet.
And I've, I've also been looking into it and there isn't an answer yet.
It's almost like a strict covenant.
It's, it is almost like, yes.
They're gonna enforce the strict covenant that's in place, that the home, so it's almost like if you have a group of townhomes and you say, how would you, it's not, I'll see how we enforce it.
We, we wouldn't be able to enforce it, it would be the developer voluntarily putting it into those covenants. Now, the question is, how can we incentivize the developers to do that without crossing the rail into conditional zoning or something else? If, if there is a path there, um, this is something that hasn't been done before, we'd be the first ones in the country to do it, um, which is super awesome, uh, cause we have nothing to, at least from my, my perspective, there's not a lot to fall back on, other than, other than we believe that the, uh, that the legal precedence for the developer to put it into their HOA covenants would hold legal standing.
Oh, no.
So that would just be a, um, that would be a recommendation from, from Tom and from the league and from, you know, a bunch of collective minds, so, don't know.
Yep, I, I, I think the only solution to that is going to ultimately be a court case decision.
Yeah, which unfortunately would likely be.
Some municipality, somewhere will install that, and then there'll be a court case.
Yeah.
That will determine the ability of the city and the city's moving forward.
But to not have something in place changes the whole fabric of, of new development and construction and, and, and how that development is used and viewed and, and, and the whole nine yards. I mean, ownership conveys one thing, rental conveys something a little different, and, and sometimes there's this big disparity between the two, intentional or not, it, it, it happens. And you wanna have a little control over, over both of them, I mean.
I agree, I agree with every point that you've made, but, you know, the ability to institute that control, that's the question. That's the issue.
So.
And the court costs would be overwhelming.
Yes, yeah, I agree.
And, you know, you can talk all you want, but you start trying to control folks who have invested money into developing land and, you know, it's a whole nother can of worms. I mean, you, you just.
Yeah, but the Realtors Association would line up and just throw every dollar they have.
So does anybody wanna call, isn't it Charlotte that's having a terrible problem?
Charlotte is having a terrible problem, but Charlotte's problem is different than our problem, is their developments already fall within, like, city limits, they already fall within, uh, they're not dealing with, um, the level of, I guess, per capita, certainly, the level of development that we have. We are developing and expanding where they're developing within, within their limits. And with their, their issue with, um, institutional investors is institutional investors purchasing existing homes in communities, um, not buying up entire new builds. So we are, we are in a, a bit of a unique circumstance, um, now.
But we don't, we don't know that it, I mean.
They're, yeah, no, they're, so they, they don't, they do not have an answer, I've contacted, they don't have an answer, they've, they've looked across the nation, they don't, they're, they're in the same boat with respect to not having an answer as we are.
Okay.
Circumstances are different with their zoning and their city limits and the, whether this is new development or existing development, theirs seems to be more towards existing development, they wouldn't have the same option to go and have a conversation with the developers to apply that to the HOA because they're already established. Um, and there is a belief that once that, once those are established, going back and changing it, then that's not what, that's not what these people bought, and you're changing, you're changing terms and conditions at that point, and then you get into a whole legal mess. But because we have not, these developers have not broken ground, they have not established HOAs, if you're gonna do it, you can do it now, um, understand, we will get sued, um, almost guaranteed. To Alan's point, the Realtor Association and anybody with a whole bunch of money would line up against it. Um, but, you know, we're here to serve the people, and at some point you gotta take a stand because I think we can all see down the road that this is something that could have a lot more unintended consequences than just scratching somebody's immediate itch to make a dollar. But, again, I don't know if we have an option to deploy in that, uh, in that realm anyway.
So what you were thinking was that we would put something.
We could.
Like in our UDO that.
No, probably couldn't do it in our UDO because I don't, we can't legislate it, but I, if it was, if there was a way to make it a condition without making it conditional zoning, if that makes sense, I'm skirting the line here, but, uh, if there was a way to work with the developers, to encourage them to input that language into their covenants, then we should pursue that. In finding some way to, for back, for lack of better terminology here, incentivize them to do so. I don't know what that incentivization would be without crossing the line potentially into contract or, uh, or conditional zoning or some other myriad of legal quagmire, so.
Which is why it hadn't been done yet.
This is why, yeah. All that to say, it doesn't look promising.
No.
And I would add to that, that, you know, if you did, and even if you potentially won the, um, environment right now on Jones Street is such that I fear that there would be a law passed very quickly to regulate that at the entire state level.
Yeah. Um, doesn't mean we can't all daydream in different ways to see if we have a moment of inspiration that leads us to.
We'll keep looking, believe me, and paying attention to that issue, especially if there's any stroke of brilliance or someone chooses to, um, be bold and brave and step out there and, you know, seek the ire of all the above that's going to line up too soon, because it would be a long, extensive, drawn-out, expensive legal battle.
Yeah, we don't want that, but we can keep thinking.
Yep, can we back up just a moment to item four G?
Yes.
I think that's where we still are.
Right. So that was the townhome units on Cruz Pond.
I'm one off, it's the, uh, the next one, H, yep, four I.
Right, so that was industry.
That's where we're at.
Neighborhood.
Yep, yep.
Right.
Um, the question that I have is, is it even necessary to look at this as a conditional zoning request? Is, is not, are not storage units, they can, a permitted use in highway business? If, if such, if you rezonate the highway business, then it becomes a conforming use or a permitted use. So why the condition? That, that eliminates, you know, having to go back and talk to this person about what we've been talking about, which is entering into conditional uses that, uh, at their request that we really can enforce.
So it just would be citizens' input on the rezoning of properties you just are proposing, eliminating the word, that's, I think, what I was asking earlier.
Yeah, well, you know, it says that, what's being recommended is approving the conditional rezoning request. What I'm asking is, is that even necessary? Can it not just be a straight request for, okay, take it as the subject be, consider approving the rezoning of property located at blah, 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 from neighborhood business to highway business? And you're still basically achieving what they're wishing to do, not that the board is voting one way or the other, but they have their day in court, so to speak, of making their request to have storage units on that property.
Okay, so we'll just eliminate the word conditional everywhere that it is, this dollar I.
In this one.
Uh, I and J, yeah. Okay, um, helpful, any other questions on that item from anyone? Okay, we move forward to city business. A, consider appointing Catherine Cruz to the Oxford Parking Authority. Uh, wants to ensure the vitality of downtown Oxford, safe and on off-site parking. And is this, is this filling Bob Williford's?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, please, so we know, all the other positions are filled?
Um, as far as any.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, any questions from anyone? Okay, move to item B, consider approving the implementation of the professional development policy. The Personnel Committee meeting and discuss this at length to recognize the work performance of our employees is vital to the success of our organization. And this would be to outline expectations, requirements, and anticipated benefits achieved by employees through continuing ad efforts specifically accomplished through achieving professional certifications and degrees. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Var or Mr. Thornton on this at this time?
Just one, uh, I mean, we've, we've spoken a little bit, but are we, we're a hundred percent confident that all, all your, all your stakeholders are satisfied with this particular way, the way it sets right now? I mean, I know it's a living document, we can, and it can be adjusted over time, but are we confident that this rises to the occasion and meets the need and everyone's satisfied?
Melissa can answer that one after I do, we, after the Personnel Committee met, we did send out the, again, request to all department heads to revisit that and provide anything additional that they felt was appropriate, so.
We updated the sheet that you provided.
Okay.
With any additions. And we want this, we can revise it as we.
Sure, yeah. Awesome. Cool, yeah, just wanna make sure everyone is, uh, is, uh, on board and we feel like this is gonna make a, a good impact and help everyone out, so, if you're happy, I'm happy.
Okay, I find, yes, sir.
Just, just a comment relative to this particular section. Um, different departments have, um, different kinds of, um, problems and needs. And I'll just throw out the Police Department, um, in terms of shortages, um. Um, I guess the competition may even be a little different, you know, relative to, uh, law enforcement training and stuff like that. And I was just wondering, um, um, would different departments might need to have different, uh, standards relative to, you know, employee development or professional development? You know, I, I just see police officers, um, that that is a, although I did not agree with, at our last uh, meeting, the comment made by, um, one of our citizens in terms of what we're trying to do for the Police Department, I, I do recognize that there may be, uh, uh, shortages that could affect safety and, and things like that. So I'm wondering, could the Police Department have a different kind of, uh, approach to career development that addresses the immediate needs of our Police Department? Because I, I mean, it's, it's not only a question of shortages, but it's a question of safety in our community. I don't know how many officers we are down, but, you know, that seems to be a bigger problem than the other departments, I could be wrong.
It is, that, that is, you know, our most pressing need there in public works currently. I think that what we are asking you to consider as far as these, um, additional policies will help with that. I don't think anything's gonna be a panacea that's going to just automatically solve problems, issues, I saw. I saw in the weekend edition of the Dispatch where the Mayor Henderson was giving the State of Henderson speech and said they were down nine or 10 positions in their Police Department. So it's, it's everywhere. It's going on everywhere. And it's a much deeper issue than what I believe professional development could resolve. Our biggest issue right now is, of course, recruiting new officers to basically deal from the out-migration, so to speak, of what we've experienced for people going elsewhere or getting out of the profession altogether. It's just a very, very limited pool that's out there. But I do believe that what these policies will do will help. They help not only other departments, but they help the Police Department as well. The issue there, as far as professional development, is there's not anything in there, nor right now that I can think of, that is going to be geared to, you know, a rookie officer, basically, coming out of B L A T, which is what you're having to recruit for right now. Because they haven't gained the experience until such time as they can become employed and seek these advanced certifications and get to those. But the theory there is that once they are there, then the opportunity is in front of them to increase their pay by taking initiative to improve their professional standing and education and training. And hopefully, through that process, they're here longer while they're earning it and they stay, once they achieve that, because it is an increase in their pay. So the attempt really is there to not only make the city more attractive, but to slow down that revolving wheel, so to speak, or turnstile of coming and going.
One follow-up to that. Is there something that this board can do that can solidify us being able to hold on to the experienced officers we have? Because, you know, we often talk about turnover and people going elsewhere and those kinds of things. Are there some steps we can take to, you know, I mean, obviously, we have to recruit. But my question is, can we somehow keep what we've got? And is there some thing, because, you know, you know, I hear all this stuff about how great our budget is and how much money we got and how well we're doing in our finances. And then, I'm trying to figure out why we can't keep these good officers, these experienced officers. And I'm wondering, are we missing it? Are we missing doing something to hold on to what we got? That's, I'm just-
Yeah, I think I've got to agree with Commissioner Bridges about that. The differential between a new police officer and an officer that's got five or six years is very small, really. And I think that needs to be, so hopefully, with this proposal here, that they can learn more and that, and earn more. But hopefully, that can go on. But there is a small differential, I think it needs to be larger.
So Commissioner Khan had his hand up first, then I'll go Commissioner Gilreath, and then the manager, in case he wants to respond to any of this commentary.
Over the past week or so, since we had the Personnel Meeting, I'm just kinda digging into it, because I agree with Quan. That was my, sort of my first inclination. But here's my understanding, and Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, make sure I get my, get it right, because you explained it to me, and I think, I think I've got a good grasp on this. But the way that I interpret this is this is a tool that we can use to address part of the problem. Now, this is to be used, the department heads will be able to work on career path development with their respective employees, so, and we'll use, use the Police Department. So the Police Chief identifies areas where she feels that she has qualified candidates that can benefit from additional training, that she could work with them to do that. And it is, this is where my understanding is, this is where I'm putting my own words in here, but the Police Chief or any department head would be able to develop their own sort of pathway to how they're, how and who they're gonna develop and when they're gonna develop them, based on their unique needs of each department. So that's, they're using this as a tool, not the, not the basically a buffet of, you can go get certifications and get X amount of raises. It's limited to, what do we say, one, one certification per person, per year, ultimately, at the, with the approval-
With the department's discretion.
Yeah, it's department heads discretion, yeah, so they have their approval, and I assume you sign off on it as a city manager, so. This is a framework for development, and-
It's also beneficial, when you look at it from the standpoint of the organization looks at it as helping in succession planning as well for that department. Because typically, what you're going to do is, those that take the initiative that wish to go and visit the Captain or the Chief of Police, or Public Works Director, or Amy, being the wastewater folks out there, that take the initiative, that want to go and achieve that higher training, greater education, those are the ones that are going to replace those others.
The, I guess the piece I was just gonna add on to that is that they this made, when I kinda like framed it that way, or framed it my mind that way, it made me feel better about the potential, because we did sort of touch on this at the end of the Personnel Meeting, but the potential for possible compression issues in salary. So being that this is a managed framework from the department heads, we do have the opportunity to prevent compression, and in the areas where I think, if there ends up being areas where there's compression, those can be addressed on a one-on-one, on a situation-by-situation basis. It's not as if we, again, this is my understanding and my interpretation, it's not as if we're gonna have chunks of employees or large numbers of employees who are suddenly, you know, who may have been here for 10 or 15 years, now making the same thing as a one-year, two-year employee. That scenario is not realistic. But in the case where there is some compression, that that can be, that can be addressed as it comes up. Is that a fair assessment?
That's a fair assessment. We're quite cognizant of compression and always looking at that. Melissa can tell you, she and I have that conversation on a weekly, if not nearly daily, basis in looking at these and continuing to try to do everything that we possibly can. And going back to Commissioner Bridges' comments, I do not disagree with him. We are preparing some additional information to provide this board regarding where our positions are within the market and where we exist. The work that we have done without going for a full-blown salary study. We've prepared quite a bit of information, and we'll be providing that to you very shortly.
So that gets that, and Commissioner Gilreath, please.
Well, then, why don't we just take this off the agenda then, until we get all the information? So that we can really make informed decisions? Versus knowing that this is probably something that we do need to look at, but if we don't already have all the facts before us, why are we trying to make a decision at this moment? I'd rather have a little bit more information to have a better understanding. Because when you do some of the simple math that's associated with this, if we were to pass the living wage, and it brings everyone up to about 32.5, and if they're given the same number of raises or increases that we've had, and since I've been on the board, that would almost give them a 10% raise if they were exceeding and doing exactly what we've asked them to do and met the mandates for getting the increase, as well as merit raise, as well as some training that they go to. They could almost have a 10% raise. And so in three years, a person making 32.5, now is almost at 42. I mean, and so, we're gonna box ourselves into, to pricing our employees and locking them into Oxford because they couldn't get, go for advancement someplace else and bring the money with them? If that's the training that they have and they're in a certain position. I mean, so you, we're not helping them in the long run, in a sense. We're sort of holding them just a little bit hostage, and then you only have resentment there because you will have inequities in other departments now. You will have a beginning police officer making the same rate as a three-year-old meter reader.
I was kinda looking at it that-
I don't see that.
I was kinda looking at it-
Well, that's exactly what our number said.
Well, I don't think that's what our numbers say.
No, no, they do.
They do not.
We gave, we gave 4% raise this, this, this go around.
I get that, but this is a developmental standard.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, in theory, we gave a 4% raise. You can get a 2.5 if you get a degree or go to school for something. And you can get possibly, and I was modest with the merit, I only gave them 2%, but technically, the way our merit is set up, they could get as high as, what, a 4%?
They could get zero as well.
So technically, it's actually even higher than I said.
But-
It is. I mean, I'm just saying, that's just basic math, y'all.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. I have a comment, but Commissioner Bridges would like to make a comment, then I'll go to Mayor Protem. Because he, I saw his hand.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the only thing I would say, and, and, I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Gilreath's concern, but I'm certainly not suggesting that we ought not move forward. Because I thought I heard somebody say this is kinda like a living document, and, and it's not set in stone. So I would like us to proceed with what we have. But keep reviewing and adjusting as we need to do. But I, I'm certainly not saying table this. I, I just recognize that different departments might have different issues. But, but I, I think this is a good start.
Mayor Protem.
Picking back on what Commissioner Bridges just saying, this is a beginning. Quite naturally, it's gonna be some kinks in it, things that we're gonna have to work out, some demographics we're gonna have to work out. But right now, if we curtail this, and all our employees had the anticipation of this proceeding, that would not do anything to number one morale. That, that would be like teasing, to put it point-blank. We gotta have a beginning. This is our beginning. By this time next year, if we realize that we need to add something, take something, whatever, all well and good, let's go forward.
And I would totally concur with that, and add that and, of course, I don't vote, but for me, it is inconceivable to not want to give everybody who works for the City of Oxford that is not there yet the living wage. And so, meaning that, that, you know, the COLA has gone into effect.
We're not, we're not there on that part yet, though.
No, but I, but you mentioned, you mentioned that up.
Yeah, I did, I did mention it, but-
Okay, so that was all I was commenting, is that you threw that in with, with the rest, with respect to and, and the merit increases as well. There's nothing, and I think Commissioner Khan said after his communication with Ms. LeBarre that, that the career development is on an individual basis by the department had in that department. So, so it is thoughtful and, and measured, I guess would be one way of putting it. And I think merit increases, because you had mentioned that as well, there is nothing, while every employee might believe that they will all get merit increases, that's not how it, it's, it works, it isn't an automatic. So I'm just pointing that out.
I mean, I know that, but what I'm saying to you is, is this a tad bit too ambitious? And maybe we're running with it too fast. If we just started talking about it, why not think about it a little while versus rushing to solve a problem? And we really don't have a, have a handle on what, how to address the problem. I mean, and we can make whatever we want to retroactive to any date that we say, we're doing it for other things. I mean, so-
You're talking about career development.
Career development, any, any of the personnel stuff.
So I would just like to speak to the career development, that this is a question that our board has been asking every manager, including the current one. I would venture to say we brought this up when we interviewed Alan. Because we, the City of Oxford had a career development program. There was a commissioner who had issues with the career development program. And so was aborted across the board. And so that has, it has actually, I mean, am I mistaken, Alan, that we brought that up with you? When we-
You maybe meant it a little better than mine about the three-hour interview.
Then all I have so far is, you know, a few sheets of paper. I mean, so if we have all of that, I would love to just review it and read it and maybe have a better understanding then. I mean, but I only have what I was given in that, in that one meeting. That's all I have. I mean, so if there's more, I need it.
Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Bullock.
Thinking back over the various approaches that we've had, the one that we did have in place that we took out, one of the key things I see in this is while we do have different departments that have different requirements, there's an overall guidance and oversight in this one that was desperately missing in the one in the past. And I had a comment earlier, but it's been well expressed by Commissioner Bridges and Mayor Protem. We've made a promise, and I think it's time for us to start living up to it.
Yeah, we've been talking about this, even before I was a commissioner. I would just attend meetings and it was being spoken about then. And we've been speaking about it for a long time.
But, but guys, my point is, if we, if we have, if everybody else has this knowledge base, and you seem to be in agreement with it, you know, I'm not suggesting that I'm not necessarily in agreement, I'm, I just need a little more understanding. I mean, so what are we talking about? I mean, how does everybody else know?
So I think we all, I can speak to my perception, and then board members who have been here for a while can certainly pipe in if, if I'm not representing. We all have known that or believed that our employees deserved this as a, what, let me, let me please finish. And left it to the manager to come up with a format that he thought would work the best. And so the format that the manager has presented, as Commissioner Bullock said, has differences by department, but has an overarching approach, that umbrella that works for the city at large. And I think the key thing was, the manager worked with each of his department heads to say what, to find out what they felt was the best approach in their department, and then they worked through that. So I guess, so, yes, I don't have any more intimate knowledge than you of what's here. It's more of the, the understanding that there was a need. So my question would be, what is the information that you believe is lacking for, for, for you?
Well, one thing that I did ask about was possible disagreements or grievances in the event that the employee did not agree with maybe not being approved for, you know, just so that everybody will know exactly where they stand and how to go about addressing it, or whatever the case may be, versus playing it by ear when the occasion occurs. I mean, because that way, if you had it written down, at least there will be equity, at least people will know, and they will have an understanding of what the due process may be in the event that they disagree. I mean, and that's-
We have a grievance procedure already spelled out. So people won't have any question about if they were being treated by promotion, by salary, by whatever. There is a defined way that they can address that.
Well, I asked that-
Unless I'm misunderstanding.
Well, I asked that in the meeting. And I was told that Alan and-
Melissa?
Melissa would, 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 um, it's in their discretion, is what I heard.
Am I wrong on that, that the grievance procedure we have would be- Am I wrong on that, that the grievance procedure we have would be applicable, in this case, of addressing issues?
They could use that route, if they chose, if they chose that route.
But there is a protection there for them, is just what I'm saying.
There is, there is, if they feel like they've been discriminated against and not being provided the opportunity, um, but, you know, I, I think, I think our department heads are professional enough, you know, in having those conversations with their staff about. Why training is encouraged, you know, it, it, like we've said before, it's not gonna be the Wild West. Employees can't just come in and pick off that laundry list and say, I wanna go do this, and I wanna do this, and I wanna do that. Take six weeks off to go to school and, you know, not work and all these kinds of things. No, it has to be beneficial to the organization, as well as the employee's professional development. So it's be very carefully scrutinized as to the whys, the wheres, the whens, and the how muches, and even the whos. Who are going to go, because I'm not gonna send a VLET that's, you know, receiving on the road training currently to go to advanced law enforcement school for eight weeks. No, that's not gonna happen. So, and it's gonna be done on an as needed basis, based upon what the city and what the department really needs. For these officers and employees or staff, whatever you want to refer them as, to take that training, because we need that individual with that knowledge. In order to perform certain tasks, and then you can expand it to, you know, utilities, there are certain individuals that, um, you have to have with specific training in order to meet state compliance. With certain programs, be it backflow prevention, or water testing, wastewater testing, all of these things, they have to have in order to meet state compliance. So what's the encouragement to do that? It's through this professional development, and I would add that, you know, what's the cost of not doing this? What is the cost of not doing it? Right now, we are, we, the city has been paying for training for decades. You've been doing it for decades, every year in your budget, there's travel and training line items, and you allocate thousands of dollars depending upon which department that it is. The only difference that you're adding to this is rewarding for somebody for actually earning a specific certification or degree. That's, that's the only difference as far as monetary, you're already have that line item in your budget, and you've been doing it for decades.
And I think the department heads, I mean, they're all great people, they know, and they put their recommendations into Alan or Melissa, right?
Believe me, if I have fifteen, you know, from whichever department wanting to take all this training.
It couldn't be done at once, though.
Well, my signature has to be on it to approve it at the end, and that isn't gonna happen.
Yeah, right.
That's just not gonna happen. You know, because like I've told the Personnel Committee and promised them and promised you that it's gonna be done based on an as need basis. And that need is not only for the individual employee, it's for the organization too. It's gotta benefit the organization to have that individual take that course, receive that training, gain that certification, or gain that, you know, additional education or degree.
Mayor Protem made a good point, I think, that the fact is, we'd be letting them down, because we'd be promising this for a long time. I think it is a good start, but it's a start, it's a start.
Right, that, that said, I firmly believe that every board member should be able to ask whatever questions they wanna ask and raise concerns. So, my question to you, Commissioner Gilvie, is, there's been some discussion about how it would be modulated. You were very specific about what if somebody feels like they should be allowed. Do you feel that it's an acceptable response to say, as Commissioner Bullock pointed out, we have a grievance, we have a grievance?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's fine. So, does that answer? I, 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 I agree with that, but, but I asked it the last time, and that's not the same answer, but I'm fine.
Do you have other questions that remain unanswered with respect to this particular implementing this?
I, I, I do, it, it, when you look at some of the job requirements, some of them seem to be job requirements that you would expect them to have prior to applying for the job, to get the job. And you would want to encourage showing up qualified people. So now you've excluded a whole group of people who have to have maybe, I don't know, engineer, let's just use engineer, let's say we want an engineer with a master's degree to take on all the big projects of, of Oxford. So does that mean, they no longer are now privy to the degree thing, because they all, they came with it? But they're, I guess they're rewarded in negotiating the salary when, when they came, right?
That is correct.
I mean, so, so that in and of itself may create a few inequities too, though. Because now you have people coming more than qualified, but may not still get the top dollar that they desire, just because there, there isn't any more training for them to do. Because, you know, they came more than qualified. I mean, so I understand rewarding people for being educated.
How can they be more than qualified if that's the requirement of that position?
Plenty of people have more qualifications in specific jobs and get less money in many instances.
Well, they are the one that volunteered to apply for that position.
I mean, but I'm just saying. E- e- exactly, exactly. I mean, anyway, I mean, so, so, my, my, my initial point was that a lot of the positions require people to have. We're rewarding them for having some basic information, I mean, not information, but basic training that they probably should have had. Anyway, I, I, I just thought that was.
Except that if they are, you know, we are having a dearth of applicants for a number of positions. So there may be, just as the police department makes the decision to support somebody going through the basic law enforcement training program at Vance Granville. Because it's, it's, it's an agreement, you don't have what we need, but we've, we are interested in having you on staff. So, we will work with you to help you get what you need so that you can be. So there could be, I mean, I know certainly, this is over thirty years ago, I was hired as a supervisor of the WIG program. I did not have the requirement, and it was very conditional on, over a two-year period of whether or not I met what was needed to be able to then qualify. And it was related to salary and all, so I think that's.
We have done that, we have done that, we have done similar.
So, I, I, I think there's always been a certain level of flexibility in the hiring decisions that the manager makes over department heads and department heads, along with the manager. And I'm sure HR input make, when they're making the decision to hire somebody, and then this. So, you know, with the health department, we didn't, we didn't have this, but there was definitely a, when you get to this rung, and you've accomplished that, then you can move another half a step up. So I think that's how I'm looking at this, is there might be some folks that are hired, and it's like, you know, you're gonna be hired here. But when you complete this certification, then you'll be where we need you to be, and the, the pay would adjust accordingly, I think.
Okay, and one other question?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the pay increases, are we looking at them being bonuses or built into their salary? Um, for education, for trainings, and that type of stuff? Are they bonuses, or are they, or, or they?
There's a variation, depending on the certification, and the depth of the courses, some are built into the salary, some are bonuses, and that's outlined in the sheet.
I, I see compensation, and it has the percentages, but it doesn't say whether it's two percent bonus, or is it two percent built into, you know, their final salaries?
It's built into the salary, bonuses actually save bonuses.
Okay, so it has the clearly, I did see a couple that says bonus, okay. All right, so everything else is built into people's salary, okay, I'm good. Well, it was very few bonuses, and you would think that there would be more bonuses then, but anyway, okay.
Okay, we're good?
I'm good.
Great, thank you, uh, everybody else good? Okay, we'll move to item C, consider approving the lateral entry from other governmental employers or governmental services policy that the city cur- currently has. To a more up-to-date version, I think I'm gonna say instead of your version. Uh, so allowing new employees coming directly from another government entity covered by the North Carolina retirement system may have their sick leave ballots transferred to the city. Employees may also accrue vacation prescribed by their number of years of experience with other qualifying employers. And this was part of the same package of offerings designed to appeal to employees that prospective employees and those who have not been offered it today. So I think that addresses a little bit of Commissioner Bridges' question about what do we do for retention, so this was one thought to you, any, does anybody?
I will add that specifically to item C, um, this was discussed by Personnel Committee meeting.
Yes.
This one is to really clarify the existing policy, because it is quite confusing, there are two different, there are two sentences in there that conflict with one another.
Thank you.
This is to make it, um, what we do currently uniform across the board for all employees.
So this is currently for all employees, it's already in place, but it was, there are some employees that we have missed?
There are some that, um, on that attachment by C were not, not treated exactly the same.
Okay.
And this would make everybody being treated the same.
This is, is it possible to have a little bit of that language in there in the narrative to just say this, this revision is geared to.
I think so. The Republican, I can work on that.
Make sure that every employee is on this equal footing, however you wanna do it.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be lovely, thank you, any questions from anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Well, my, my question in dealing with, with this one, is that some of these are going back as many as twenty-six years and maybe fourteen years? Let me remember how to read this thing.
No, Alan is the twenty-six years and, and.
Yeah, I mean, were, were these issues not addressed previously with other boards, with, with losing your s- sick time?
I, I, well, Alan is in direct contract to the board, so that was, that was a separate discussion, and it only impacts the full date, not his sick leave.
It didn't affect my sick leave.
But, um, so. I don't think anybody goes back to being hired, uh, the earliest is two thousand six, and that doesn't even impact him. Most of these are more recent hires, and that was what Mr. Thornton said, is that, that there were some folks that were missed. Also, I had some, oh, yeah, I see, that was, that was right. What I'm seeing is the earliest, well, s- some of the people with vacation hours will be affected differently, but, um, the sick leave is, the earliest hire was just twenty seventeen.
Well, well, my point.
The first time is just information, you know, how much time they add with other people's salaries. And then the sick leave, add to sick leave is what we did, not allow them to bring with them the current policy, we haven't placed, we only allow two hundred and fifty hours.
Right, and put my question was, did they request to bring it, or did, did they contract to, to come at a much higher salary and leave their sick, or vacation, or whatever they were giving up?
It was our policy, it's our current, and we're looking at being able to retain and bring in other transfers that will allow them to bring their full sick leave. And as we can go back to treatment.
But, but you probably had a lot of people who applied for a position with the city of Oxford who chose not to come, because they would have lost a lot of time, and so therefore, they chose not to come.
That's the point.
I mean, so, exactly, I mean, so now you, you have somebody who may have been equally qualified and really wanted to come, but refused to give up that major benefit. But now we're gonna reward that same action by another person, is what we're doing.
But they might, if they see that we offer this benefit, and they start looking around again, this time they might come. I mean, that, that, the whole point, again, is that we have been discussing as a board for easily the past year. What are the things that we can put in place that will attract applicants and retain our qualified personnel? So on the one hand, this does some things, we, there was a discrepancy in how some people were handled with respect to vacation, that's being smoothed out. The sick leave was a policy that we had in place, and exactly as you have said, that some people may have chosen not to come. I certainly would not have come in the health department, because I had, I don't know, years of sick leave. But now, that, that we put this in place, somebody who might have been looking at the city and went, I can't do that, I gotta stay here. They might look again and go, ooh. So that, that's the absolute intent.
I understand that.
Okay.
But my question was, had, did they agree that, or were they without pay at any point, because they didn't have all of these hours now? I mean, th- this, this is impacting, this is impactful for people who were affected by it, and now we're, we're gonna change it at, at this point and retroactive.
When you say this is impactful, meaning that they didn't get sick leave when they were hired, they didn't get the treatment?
They, they, oh, possibly they lost some, and, and let's say they came.
That's what this is doing, is just giving them, that they weren't able to bring with them.
Just giving it back.
I understand that, I understand that, but why, anyway, my, okay.
So you, are you saying that you can see putting the policy in place going forward, but you can't see applying it retroactively?
Well, I'm trying to understand why retroactively.
Think to maybe adjust Commissioner Bridges' thing of what can we do to retain quality employees, would that be?
Well, I think a key thing too, you're talking about existing employees who were denied that, as opposed to going back to someone who chose to go so, somewhere else.
Right. Yeah, it's.
And if we try to address a shortcoming based on a law policy, then hopefully in the future, it will allow us to have the benefit.
Yeah, and if you hired, if we put this in place today, and anybody coming gets to bring their backpack of sick leave with them. Then would we run the risk of making people who weren't given that, that we value, that weren't given that opportunity to feel angry and frustrated? Because they're like, are you kidding me, I've already been here three years, and, and I didn't get that, so, I mean, that's how I'm, I'm looking at why you do it retroactively. Is to tell the employees that we have, that we value them as much, who meet that requirement, as much as anybody new coming in. Am I, do I, did I get that, Mr. Thornton?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's, doesn't it sort of balance out?
Yeah.
Balance out who and what we have to who and what we'll get.
Maybe so, but you might need to take a look at the whole employee thing across the board because we might have lost a lot of people. I mean, and I know we won't, let's not talk about who, who was, who's no longer here, but we're subject to have a lot of retirees who maybe didn't get the benefits that this is a powerful thing here. I mean, this is a wonderful thing to be able to retroactively go back and pick up something that you lost, that you weren't entitled to according to the policy and the decision that you made at that time, and now you can go back and undo that, that decision and be, and be a ma- and have, and it be a major benefit to you?
Well, but we say, when I first came to work here, the policy was you could bring all your sick leave. It was changed approximately six, seven years ago under prior HR to two hundred and forty hours, limiting it.
Why did we change it?
I don't recall.
I don't either. But for you, Melissa.
Why don't we know?
I don't see your name here. Anyway, the.
Can I throw another missed?
Oh, you, you did, okay. I'm gonna use Antoine. It would just be saying we're balancing the tables.
Yeah. I mean, according to this, he's got eleven years experience.
I see it as the same thing with state agencies. When you go from Central Regional to Murdoch, your time goes with you. Well, at one point, the City of Oxford did that for people coming from other local municipalities and it changed. So now we're going back and saying, if you were employed here during the time of the change, we're now going back and giving you what you should have had all along. We're just balancing it out. And I see it as a way of again maintaining the employees that we have and then terr- their integrity and hopefully inspiring other employees. Yeah, I can go to Oxford, it's closer to my home, I can take my time with me, my time will carry with me, I won't lose anything, so that's how I perceive it.
So, so why was it changed eight years ago?
I cannot remember. It has to have been changed before we hired Hawk Un, because he's on this list and he's the earliest. I do not remember that.
So much went on back then?
So is there anything else that you want to bring up as like, that you either wanna know or that you think needs to be changed?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just, just curi- I, I don't know, I don't know why this does not. I mean, I understand the benefit, but it seems like it's a little late to, to, to make some of these adjustments. It's one thing to move forward with it, but to go back and pick up all of this way back when, that's, that's a whole, and we're only looking at the people who are currently, anyway.
But wouldn't it be unfair to keep existing employees without that benefit, but maybe go out and hire somebody new and allow them to bring everything with them?
Yeah. I think we're just correcting a mistake that was made a few years ago when we, when we stopped it.
See, and, and, and that's why I want us to really think about it because if that was a mistake and it used to be, what was the rationale that the city used to, to go to, go to this and, and cause people to lose that to the point now that we're, we're standing on our heads to, to rectify it?
I, I, if I was going to hazard a guess, I would guess that it was the recommendation of our HR director at that time from the perspective of liability. Certainly, there, there was a lot of discussion some years ago, which is one of the reasons that the United States Post Office is considered to be problematic is because they require them to put seventy-five years of retirement payouts in the thing, even though that, so if, there was a frame of mind that you cannot encumber the city with too much liability. So in this area, it's possible that that is why it was brought to the board from staff and approved at that time. That said, we find ourselves in a totally different position with respect to hiring and, and turnover and the need to attract qualified, experienced workers. So if I was going to guess, I would think that that was, I do not recall, but that's why it was stopped then with something related to restricting the level of liability that we are putting on the city in the future and this is what we're gonna do. But hiring today is a different beast than it was even three years ago.
It is. I will add that what we're asking you to consider implementing is pretty much what, um, I would say nine out of ten local government employers already have in place as far as policy. It is, I don't know, many that, um, don't have this in place currently that allow you to do that. If, if an employee is coming from another municipality that's part of the local government employees retirement system, they allow that to be transferred. And I will also say that you, you also understand that our policy states that at the end of the year, you, you can't accrue more than two hundred and forty hours of vacation. So you, you can't just keep piling up vacation and have five thousand hours at the end of your career and get paid one-time payout. No, it converts to sick leave at the end of the year if you have more than two hundred and forty hours of accrued vacation time. So there's another safeguard already, if you wanna look at it that way, build into your policies to avoid a tremendous.
Have we answered your questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then, um, board, everybody else good? Okay, so that's item C. Item D, consider approving the living wage increase for certain positions in the city, which we started to discuss earlier, uh, to increase the living wage to fifteen an hour for those permanent full-time positions within the city and which will impact fourteen positions. Did the, this number change at all with the implementing of the COLA increase with this cu- current budget? Okay, the, great. Do any, um, any of my colleagues have any questions on this item? Okay. So we go through that and we go to the audit contract, uh, which I am going to pass that on to the manager because I believe this just, this attachment just got added or did you have this when?
Well, um, when we sent out, well, when we got word from our former, now former auditor, I suppose, since we're in the new fiscal year, um, and we scrambled to get out, you know, requests for proposals, um, we included a date of July the first at five o'clock to receive any proposals. So this was technically sent out on the thirtieth or twenty-ninth, I can't remember the date, in June. So we basically at that time had replaced, requested a placeholder, um, but since that time, we put these agenda packets together that you now have in front of you on paper and you have the proposal that we received. And you've got one currently from S. Preston Douglas and Associates LLP to conduct the required audit of July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, which is of course the fiscal year that is just ended. And you see the price there and the city's, uh, our staff's recommendation at this point in time is to enter into that contract for that one-year period of time until we get a better feel of how they do their work, how compatible that they are.
Excellent, thank you. We certainly appreciate you pivoting and I'm sure that you and, and Mr. Unwer- were invested.
We just scrambled a little bit.
Fiercely on this, so, so we appreciate anybody who had anything to do with Quinkie. You sure just got submitted on time. Colleagues, do any of you have any questions for Mr. Thornton on this? Okay?
I just have one brief comment. I was at a COG meeting and the COG, um, the company that did their audits, let them know like three weeks notice if they were not doing audits anymore. They had to scramble to get another accounting firm to do their audit and, and, and so, and not everybody does them and so I.
It's become very specialized and it's becoming more so because some are getting out still because of the additional requirements to perform, you know, governmental auditing. It's becoming more and more specialized.
That's right.
Excellent. Okay, well, well done. Thank you very much. We go next page, consent agenda, finance report from Hawk Un and the meeting minutes from June. Uh, any questions? Okay, uh, well, then with that, I ask Commissioner Kong, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yes, ma'am, just a couple of questions, uh, for the city manager. Any update, uh, to the social district and at the, um, the risk of belaboring any, uh, points to employee benefits, um, is it possible to, in the near future, uh, go back and look at the, um, take-home car policy for police officers that we had considered extending to, uh, whatever that range was?
We're always open to revisiting that should the board see fit to do so.
That was something we talked about, so, uh, I would recommend that we, maybe we can add it to our agenda since we already have these other, um, these other items on there.
Well.
I think it may be an item you refer to the Personnel Committee and let them do a little.
Would it be personnel or are we gonna have it in public safety? That's.
It depends on how you look at it, if it's a benefit or a policy, I can't, it's a benefit.
Benefit.
It's a combination, isn't it?
It's a combination, yeah.
Your public safety, your personnel? Combine.
Combine it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Okay, however you want. If it's easier for you, Commissioner Bridges, to throw it to Mayor Protem, we can do that and obviously everybody will be equally invited, but if you would like to combine them, then we can certainly do that.
Combine them on Commissioner Bridges' schedule, since his schedule is a lot more stringent than mine.
Right.
Okay. I think, yeah, combine them.
Okay, excellent, lovely, thank you.
No problem. And, uh, any update to the implementation of the?
Yes, we are, uh, prepared now finally to submit all of the required documentation. We have it in order and it will be sent off probably tomorrow. As a matter of fact, the last bit of it is sitting on my desk and I was actually reviewing before I came to this meeting.
Okay. So then possibly you might be able to tell us more at the next meeting?
Um, we'll have to wait for this thing.
Right, to see what they, their timeline, yeah. Okay, is that good for you?
That's good for me.
Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Gilreath? I've, I've talked enough tonight. You think you, you've got all your points made, okay, that's fine. Commissioner Toby?
Um, a couple of things I, I request. Um, I tried to watch the, the meeting on the Zoom because I've, I've been so sick, but the sound went and I couldn't hear anything. So I don't, I can get some minutes from that, can I?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have contract, contacted Newcombe twice. And I'm trying, Stephen and I came up this afternoon and worked on it and I had someone who I hope was watching and was gonna text me and I got no text.
Okay.
If it, if.
It's very frustrating for me, you know, I mean, I was the home, but.
But when I look at this, everything's working.
Great.
It didn't tell me that the aud- audio was gone.
It, it go, yeah.
Yeah.
And the other thing, um, wanted to mention is the, um, the murals downtown. I understand because I've been sick for so long, um, I understand the murals, not COVID. I've started, is that right? I haven't been out and about really.
That's correct, um, uh, uh, when you got to me, I was actually gonna make the comment that, um, now that Commissioner Toby is back and feeling a little more chipper, we need to, uh, call a planning committee.
Certainly.
To talk about the mural policy.
We'll do that.
So, yes, and there is one, um, that, that I have worked with some folks on that is going up on the back of the, uh, Kern Law Office Building that was, the planning for that was underway a long time before a mural policy even was coming before and we did work with Cheryl Hart, um.
Someone sent me a photograph.
Is it meeting your approval?
Oh, I love it. I mean, anything that enhances downtown, I just love it, so.
Great. Awesome, yes, okay, moving along. Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, uh, any update on the armory? One thing. The other is, um, I did a walkthrough on some property right across from the Hicks Field. We have, um, Lorik, I forgot the couple's name, Strongarm Bakery, um, but we did a walkthrough on some property right across from the Hicks Field. They, they just wanted to show me, 'cause you know how we talk about how walkable and inviting Oxford is and they wondered if, and I think that Mayor Potter may own some of that property and there may be some property owners.
Oh, you're talking about across Spring Street?
Yes, across Spring Street.
No, it, it's actually across Williamsburg.
Williamsburg, that's right.
You have Hicks Field.
Right.
Yeah, I got you, I just needed where.
Right, I'm sorry.
Where are Hicks Field and?
Hicks Field, that, that direction. We're going down the Holler, I suppose.
Going down Railroad Avenue?
Well, it's the wizy part along the sewer easement in, in the gully.
It runs adjacent to Railroad.
Yes.
Seventy-five or a hundred yards past it, but it runs in that direction, same direction.
Okay, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just making the point that it is a lot of property and I was thinking with all of our recreational stuff in that area, that would be a perfect place for like a bike trail, walk trail, um, you know, I tried to think swimming pool, but you know, I don't know if it's big enough.
When it rains, it is.
Get a few boogers down.
But, but, you know, I had that, as we were walking through that area, I said, is this big enough for a pool, public swimming pool? No, but I just thought they had a, and they feel like that there are stakeholders, um, businesses that would, um, help and, and contribute to making that sort of a park or, or a place that, um, we could, you know, you could take your kids, take your dog and, and I just thought it was a great idea if, 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 if there's any way the city can cooperate with businesses to develop that area as a, as a, as a kind of a park. And I, I'm just throwing out, and I'm sure that they probably may have talked to other commissioners, I don't know, but, um, I, I can't believe that they only picked me out to, to go over that. I mean, I wa- I put on some boots and we walked through that area and I, you know, they were quite brave, they had on short shorts and stuff and I, I was, um, very impressed with that property over there. I mean, and it's just sickness, it's wood, it, it's, it seems to me that if, if, we own some parts of it, but.
There, there's actually quite a bit of property along sewer easements throughout the city that, um, present opportunities for greenways. I think that would be, and, and some of them have already been identified in the County Greenway Master Plan.
Right.
And so I think that's a conversation.
Have I did some talking?
That, that, you know, we've had, 'cause I've been approached by them, I've also been approached by somebody else about a lot of other, um, opportunities, so, you know. So, you know, we've had some conversations and Tina is looking into it. She's had some rides in some different places with, on the mule. So I think it's all.
Can I add one thing to Commissioner Bridges? That's correct. There's a lot of excited folks. They've had a lot of excited conversations. I took the liberty of, when the conversation, helping them compile some of their thoughts. And there, it is now organized into a presentation along with some renderings and some GSI information. I indicated to the city manager that I would be dropping that off with him. I just wanted to give some spacing for the accounting firm stuff to get worked out because this all sort of happened around that time. But there is, we kind of put it into some type of context that we can look at. And I'll be giving that to Alan just to take a look at with the GSFI, GSFI information on the properties and so forth to see if it is of interest to pursue. And certainly now that we can present, you know, that could be provided to the whole board just for context. But at least it's organized, so.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Mayor Protem?
Just quickly, we've got a new business on.
Let me, I'm sorry.
I'm fine.
I didn't get a response.
You're right.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault.
No, no, no.
I don't have anything new to report regarding the armory or use of the existing armory facility. I have had a different request regarding the property that we'll be exploring through the Property and Real Estate Committee as we get together to have that conversation about that, but not the building. Doesn't involve the building.
Okay. Okay, so, and that would happen in a committee meeting and not in closed session?
That would get started in a committee meeting and it may be closed depending upon what we delve into.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Mayor Protem?
New business owner on College Street is having some problems with his trash. He said he's the only one that he's seen having to pull his trash to the front. He was told that he could leave it in the back and I told him I would just bring it to the board. And I'm hoping it has worked itself out. So if you get a call, maybe, or I haven't gotten a call, maybe it's worked itself out. But I didn't want a new owner to, new business to be offended and we're looking to it.
Please encourage an individual to contact us if they haven't already.
Okay.
Would they go down to the Finance Water Department?
They would through Hawks Department.
Right.
Commissioner Phil, we received that very same email earlier last week and I did respond back to the superintendent of Waste, of the business.
Thank you.
So anyhow, I, he himself is gonna go out there and take a look. This shouldn't be any more issues.
Well, I hadn't gotten a rebuttal because I haven't got, went back to getting more ice cream. I was eating too much, so.
I picked up my ice cream the other day.
I sure will, but thank you.
Awesome.
I skipped ice cream last week.
Well, I'm just gonna throw out there, if you have not tried their Italian ice.
Strawberry and a waffle cone, that's it.
And the cherry, fresh fruit in both of them, as to quote my husband, to kill for. So. Commissioner Bull.
Just a comment that I saw in the news at night that Raleigh is undergoing the process of installing a social district. And I think it's coming up for a vote tonight.
I'll see if it is. Wake Forest has also begun their consideration. I had one of their commissioners reach out and ask some opinions. So there's definitely picking up steam.
I would, me, I would like to thank Thursday, what was it called?
Quitting Time.
Quitting Time. I think it was a success. I might lose some weight now. I think the public, and I tried to get to all the venues just to hear what the public was saying and the atmosphere, and it was, it was received well. I think everybody enjoyed it. And I was asked last Thursday night, why they quitting? You know, why they quitting Quitting Time, you know? But to all that had a hand in it, it's a great success.
Let the businesses know. We appreciate that.
It is gonna resume in the fall.
Oh, really?
Yes. So it is a break the summer months. As I was told, where it's slower, everyone's at the lake and it's a thousand degrees. But the fall, is my understanding that it will resume.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner, anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Longkin?
Yeah, I have a question about how the comprehensive plan stuff is going. What are, are there any updates to that or what process we're in now?
Cheryl, give us an update on where we are.
Well, we'll pair it towards a public info session on August the fourth from five thirty to seven o'clock. Or if you can just drop in, I think it's gonna be a specified time.
It's gonna be where?
It's gonna be at the Public Works.
Okay.
Because it's a specified time when people can come in and hear a presentation, but you can just drop in and. So then what can Alyssa and the business, social media and all, so.
Yeah, 'cause I was wondering, next question is how are we gonna, I guess, I guess my thing was I wanted to make sure I knew because I wanted to get as many people as involved as possible to get the word out. By word of mouth to some of that's gonna be posted and stuff, so we'll see.
And don't hold the tools that are stink of this is, we're gonna make special claims only for this where it's not underplanted or in the government page. This is a special page that she created, so. And she's gonna need the social media, the Facebook work and Facebook.
Yeah, 'cause I think, yeah, I think I saw something on the newsletter about a, about like a special website or page or something.
Yeah, I think that's what she's working on apparently.
So does that mean the survey part has already been done or we're in the process of doing the survey part?
I think it's still opportune. We had a time set up and I think that was June twenty-third for like different groups and I think that it was broken up in four different groups. So what we're gonna do now is go back to some of the people that could not make it and they can do it even if it's a Zoom or, we're gonna try to make it to get there. But I think this is gonna be the Zoom or the waffle cone.
Where was that information shared?
It was being shared on social media. It went through our communication post. So it's not coming through media, it's coming through a list.
Because I saw it, but I, I didn't know what to do with it and I saw a process, but I wasn't aware that the process had begun.
Well, I think what you saw, maybe just told what it was asking for and I think the data was the call. So we inherent, and I can, in fact, myself, like a group of villagers, a group of developers, builders, I can build them personally and have asked them to just.
So it's not open to all citizens?
I didn't say it wasn't. I say it's some of the groups that I could contact personally since they are active doing developer stuff.
So that, so that was that, 'cause I remember getting a call from somebody who said I was invited. I showed, nobody was there, what's going on. Was, I inferred, which was maybe incorrectly, that that was maybe a key stakeholder opportunity where you were reaching out to very specific members to say, come on in, we wanna hear from you. And there would be a different opportunity at a different time where it was broadcast.
Right, and so a group of stakeholders were identified, but also just as Commissioner Bridges said, he had a group of people that said, well, he wants to visit us. Those are the same people I invited to participate. So even though we had a group of stakeholders identified, anyone interested, I invited them to participate.
So I think this board was unaware that that was even an opportunity. So I, is, I mean, I.
Because I'm not mistaken, I think maybe Commissioner Toby.
Yeah, I knew about it, but I was sick.
Right, not every board member, but Commissioner Toby, because of him being a committed member, was contacted. And again, it's still open for some people to say, I'm just use, for example, Washington, Washington. He came at one o'clock. They got there twelve. So, you know, I've just gotta permit Washington, because he's a good one to just say, hang it up, talk to them and they still waiting to get some feedback from them. And that was just for them.
So would it be a reasonable request that anytime there are dates that are being set for input from public members, that the board be CC'd on that information? Is that a reasonable thing to ask?
Certainly a reasonable request. I think we may be confusing the individual citizens that were identified as one-on-one opportunities to meet for the comprehensive planning process to the open public stakeholder meetings. Those are still to take place. I think if I remember the contract, there was a minimum of three that were to take place, I believe, if I remember their proposal. And then that's the opportunity for anybody, you know, to come and be a part of that process.
And David Dean is gonna take the place. I think that was August the fourth.
Right, okay, so we'll make sure that Alyssa sends that out and we've got all the coordinates.
I'll talk to her tomorrow about where she is with the creation of that page that would contain all of that information and making sure that everyone gets a link to it.
Right, that'd be great. Okay, super. Anything else, Commissioner? Okay, Mr. Thornton, anything you'd like to add?
I don't think I have anything further.
Okay, Mr. Burnett?
Hey, ma'am.
Okay, so with that, we have, you know, we have a closed session and that is just for members of the board. So with this, I would request a motion to go into closed session.
Motion.
Okay, that was Mayor Protem and Commissioner Toby. Okay, and so we got that timing and I'll take a note or two. And we will thank all of you all for hanging out with us tonight. And we hope you have a lovely meeting. And what was, what does that mean? Oh, that would be good.
I do have one thing. If you plan to attend the Masonic home luncheon and you have not let me know, please do so.